Cheers all the way.
That's nervous.
We're trying to...
Are you one of the...
No.
Is that who got the job?
It's pretty spanked.
What?
Pretty spanked. Yeah. H L got G S E S.
I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
My team did good. Yeah. It was a big dark, but it was a lot of January and December. Kind of writing proposals.
Yeah. We got forward here.
I hope this scares the hell out of all of us.
All right. Let's go ahead and get started here. We're running on a little bit late.
We have a trivia question.
Let's go ahead and start. I have a piano over here on the right side. We have a work session on the planning for the Sixth Street project. And believe...
Yes, I'll introduce our teams first. And then what we're going to present and how much time we're going to do is that. And then we'll get started. I'm Jim Langford with Studio Insight. And I'd like to introduce my team. Jenny Bostick with Studio Insight. Alicia Zimmerman with Eltuk, Planning and Design. And also Doug Pratt with Land Studio, a local landscape architect.
Where's the peanut down?
We are here. Boiling John, as we put it together, about some of Spock used in slides. All of you have probably seen this presentation already. And so we won't have to get into the minor details. We'll be able to go through it rather quickly. I'd like to do it in about 20 minutes and give you the time, the remaining time, for your comments. And so it's going to be a slide presentation. We won't necessarily go to the backboards at all. That's just for backup if we have to get into discussion. So it's a slideshow. And we will... All three of us, Jenny and Alicia, will be sharing the presentation as we go along. We have Solidness's project in January with the first couple of workshop. We are now in the second workshop. We're finishing that up tonight. We have the pleasure of coming to Glenwood via train. We're going back tomorrow. We are going back tomorrow via train. It's a bit of a real joy having to take alternative form of transportation. These are photographs of the work session we had yesterday with the steering committee. And photographs of well attended. How come we didn't have those last night? Our goal tonight is to really get your feedback. Quite literally, you're headed to work that we've developed and shown over the past 24 hours. Here are a couple of highlights for you. The big areas that we're focusing in on are the big areas and connections between the North Glenwood. That's what we're calling the Village Core. And a chorus of downtown, established downtown. The upcoming Confluence Development Park here. And then the Two Rivers Park. And then certainly how everything connects over to the meadows. We're going to show you tonight are some ideas of how all of this can connect with each other. And with some development areas and opportunities for development. This is kind of a collection of air, of images that kind of show how we are using, strengthening certain connections through the corridor, the Sixth Street corridor. Identifying great opportunities to really strengthen and enhance the river's edge. Three distinct areas of development opportunities. This is the Village Core. This is over on Sixth. This is where we're going to introduce the Civic Center concept tonight. And then another opportunity over on the River, Riverfront. And we're not going to talk, focus in on that tonight. Areas, this is more of just a kind of a big diagram that just shows the connections, the pedestrian connections that we're going to try to establish. And then other areas of secondary connections. Again, not going to get into the details whatsoever tonight. This is just kind of an overview of where we've been. And then also how we have been developing land use scenarios. Four different scenarios that we came to the workshop yesterday with and talked about that at the presentation. So tonight, we're going to really focus in on three things, three moves. The first move is the East Sixth, the portion of Sixth which we call East Sixth. This is between, it's the pines, it's between Pine and the new intersection. It's a two-block section on Sixth. This is where we've identified, we think is a priority project. Great opportunity to really focus in on how this can develop as our, kind of one of the first place making opportunities, development opportunities in this corridor. The second is West Civic Street. It's the diagonal. And Alicia's going to talk to the devolution of this section of the corridor. And what that means, the pros and cons of how that devolution can really create development opportunities. And then the third is Civic Spine, or we're going to call it Civic Center, Civic Spine. A major connection between the corridor and Two Rivers Park via a new pedestrian bridge that crosses I-70. Expansion or park improvements, a new civic uses that would be integrated into this one area. That could involve a major parking facility and hotel. We'll talk about that in detail. So what we want to do is kind of see the bigger background, see the bigger picture. This is a kind of a discussion we started last night with the mayor. And talking about how we take and see the north side and how it relates to the bigger picture. How it connects to the south side and some of the existing and future opportunities. And amenities of the south side. Starting with Seventh Street, the downtown enhancements that are already in place and those that are in motion. And the opportunity to really connect the downtown with the north side. With this first development opportunity of Village Core, the Sixth Street section right here. So imagine the energy of the downtown. And now it's being, it's crossing over on a new pedestrian bridge. And connecting with the energy of this new core, the Village Core. So people on the south side are going, well, we have got to get across that bridge. And really experience some of the cool things that are happening on the north side. And likewise, people on the north side are doing the same thing. So you get this synergy between the two energies and it's all connected with the new pedestrian bridge. But we're not stopping there. We think that there's a great opportunity for us to connect yet over to I-70 with a new Civic Center that would be somehow integrated into this area here of the corridor. Connecting across to the park. And then the pedestrian, the bike connections, primary and secondary bike connections that feed or connect these two areas together. Civic Core, Civic Center with the Village Core. And you can see how this would then begin to play out with the redevelopment of the Confluence Park area. And we can see now how we're beginning to establish this kind of loop between all of these major kind of amenities zones. And the pedestrian, the bike connections between the two. And really beginning to get go-to places down on the north side. And over here on the west side. And really tying all of that together with pedestrian and bike connection. Strengthening what already exists. Building new connections via Seventh Street, and then also the Fifth Street corridor. Try to build that up. So from here, what we're going to do is we're going to back up and focus in on this piece. And Jenny's going to start to talk in detail about this section of Sixth. And the Street section. And what the opportunities would be.
So zooming in on the East Sixth Street from our climbing world. This is what it looks like today. And obviously with the new construction of the interchange. And this segment of the street being handed over to the city and not C dot San Antonio. We have the opportunity to look at the street a little differently. That and we've heard estimates of 80% reduction in traffic. And we hear constantly over and over again in our stakeholder meetings and meeting with the public that this, they really want this space to be pedestrian friendly. Really, they want it, you know, away from, of course, it will still serve automobiles, but it should be a pedestrian-first environment. And also thinking about bikes along here because there is that connection to the Glenwood Canyon Trail that is very important. So we have a couple of options. Option A, we're calling a cycle track. And if you haven't heard that term, it's basically a protected bike lane. So the bike lanes on either side would be one-way. So this is the north side of the street would be going west. And this is the south side of the street, you would go east. And then a separated walk. And it might be differentiated from the walkway either through paint or paving patterns or something. But so a dedicated, but also separated from parking. This is on-street parking. And then two travel lanes, one in each direction. So protected, it's very comfortable for novice, families, you know, any sort of biker is very comfortable using this type of facility. And then a sidewalk adjacent to new development or existing development. So this is some pictures of what a cycle track would look like. So you can see a raised curve. And then so that the bike, the bike lane is actually on the same level as the sidewalk. Just a couple of images of what that looks like. And then we have another option, which we're calling the promenade. And this would put bikes on the north side. And so the north side, the public realm here away from the curb is a little bit wider. We like that because the north side has more sun. Perhaps there's some interaction with the land use over here and some plazas or cafe seating. But it's really a multi-use trail. So it's, it might be, you know, have different material. But you could walk on either side and then bikes would use the multi-use trail. And hopefully fit in a double row of trees. So that it would be a little different from south side and north side. Whereas the other option is very similar and symmetrical. And these are just some pictures of what the north side of promenade, that multi-use trail space could look like. And the sharing of bikes and pets. Some other elements along this portion of Sixth Street that we've heard are desired is more cafe seating, you know, outdoor amenities. Also creating an identity for this, for the street. So that when you come to, you know, the Village Core, what does that look like? And we've talked about it being an extension of Seventh Street. And we would like to open up that discussion with you all about that identity. Is it a continuation, an extension of the Seventh Street? Are the materials and the streetscape being similar? Because that makes sense of it being an extension. Or should it be differentiated, have its own unique identity? So those are some things that we'd like to talk about. And another element associated with the Sixth Street that keeps coming up is this idea of solving the parking. So looking at a location for parking, we keep coming back to the south side of Sixth. Both for access reasons, the potential to hook into the pool parking with underground parking here and then redeveloping the site. We think it could be a really exciting catalyst, mixed-use development. Activate, help activate the park here coming across from the pedestrian bridge. You have these wonderful amenities that we would often look to as recommendations of this plan, such as the pedestrian bridge and a park as a public amenity. And these are being implemented as part of the interchange. So we're just trying to build on the positive aspects that are already occurring in the area. And then I'll hand it over to Alicia to talk about West Sixth.
So if we think of West Sixth highlighted in yellow to the west side of the roundabout going in. One of the key components, one of the three that we talked about here is the devolution, devolution concept that applies to this section. It's currently state highway, you know, C dot, you know, rules and design guidelines apply to it. So what could it look like if it were a C dot roadway? Or if it were, if the city were to take it over and this devolution process went, what are the pros and cons of that? In general, the pros are that there's more freedom for design. Because although C dot is doing what they can right now to really embrace the bicycle pedestrian component and things like that in their designs, most cities are doing more on their roadways. And then also in our, this topic came up in our preliminary discussions with C dot of their kind of saying, okay, so what's going to happen to this roadway? One of the things that they brought up and certainly don't know all the details on it is the cash payout from C dot that they usually do when they turn a roadway over to a municipality. And that includes some calculation for, you know, a 10 or 20-year period of what they would think maintenance would be so that the city isn't start with this roadway that they have to maintain. The maintenance pieces are anywhere from something that they would think of, the snow plowing scale, up to the, you know, when does it need to be repaved, that type of thing. They're doing a repaving project on part of the, around this portion as a result of the road reconstruction anyway because this is going to be, you know, a piece of their construction detouring. So the cons of it, like I said, have to do with maintenance. And then financing down the road, you know, considering how we, how we make sure that we have enough money to take care of this roadway that the city might take. However, that devolution concept is important once we start thinking about what the roadway cross sections are. So this is what the existing section looks like, south side on the left again. It's a five-foot walk, you know, six here, some places, six some places it's five. And then that hardscape, three lanes on the roadway with that two-way left turn lane in the middle. And then the same on the north side, five or six-foot walk. So in the proposed concepts on this, we looked at what we could do in the short term to embrace and allow more enhanced pedestrian and bicycle movement through this area. And we, in this case, are showing a multi-use path on the north side of the road. And that's basically assuming that, you know, the roadway stays the same and we're not making large changes. This, this could potentially be coordinated with something, you know, if it wasn't, didn't go through devolution. But once you get into things like limiting access or, you know, providing parking, which is what, this is a potential long-term option. Those are the types of things that would need to be under city control for that. So this option is, there's two pieces to it. This is where a turn lane might be needed for some more controlled access to some of the, you know, potential mixed use uses along the area. We would have a turn lane and parking on one side or the other. In this case, we've shown it on the south side. And then in locations where we don't need a left turn lane, we could potentially have parking on both sides. There's certainly also been discussions about, you know, what else goes in the middle of the road. But I think this is for now where we've landed to also try and take, take care of some of those parking concerns that folks have. So...
Question?
Yep.
Is there reason to be concerned that a conversation with C dot is going to end up being one that they say, we're willing to enter into a devolution agreement, try to test and take out, take all of Sixth all the way into West Glenwood?
I think that is, that's a good point. I think that is, there's a potential for that. I know that, I don't think anything's been decided yet. So I think that the discussion just needs to take place. Because certainly it was about three weeks or a month ago when we were speaking with C dot. They didn't come to the table with any assumptions from what we could tell. So definitely something to keep in mind though. Because that, that section, although the city may want to do improvements too, doesn't have as much impact, at least on, you know, kind of the changes for the, that are going to happen after the construction.
It's logical. They may not want to split maintenance, for example.
Right, right. I mean, the city, this, it's a more obvious decision, not obvious, but more obvious for the city in this section than the rest might be harder decisions. Other elements along this section also are things like enhanced crosswalks, enhanced crossings. Those are a little bit harder on the C dot roadway, but certainly need some locations for those pedestrian movements. As well as basically other images showing some of the other kind of minor elements too.
Okay, thank you. Well, we're going to focus in on the last part of our presentation, just a few slides to talk a little bit about this Civic Center, the Civic Spine that's identified. This is obviously Two Rivers Park right here, Deveraux, and then West Sixth. And this is the alignment of Fifth, Fifth Street. And again, this is just, consider this nothing more than a diagram, but just an idea that kind of shows the potential of what could develop here. You could establish a strong intersection in almost a civic kind of street terminating at some form of plaza of which individuals get up and over I-70 and down to an overlook and back down to Two Rivers Park. The idea here is, is to create a civic element, very highly visible, almost a gateway element that is seen clearly from I-70. And that has a multiple set of uses to it. It's one, obviously, a large, some sort of parking structure integrated into this development. Parking structure that is used for the facility, but also a shared parking structure for events over at Two Rivers Park, a shared structure for other uses in the neighborhood as well. And again, not, no specific site plan here, it's more of a bubble diagram. But imagine a civic plaza that connects over to a bridge. The Civic Center itself, imagine what kind of uses could go into this kind of facility. A highly flexible facility that could be used for special events. The Historical Society potentially over here, Art Center, Art Center activities, meeting spaces, and other activities that you have probably identified over the many years that are spread out throughout Glenwood that potentially could find a new home over here. A catalyst kind of development that really could energize the entire neighborhood and begin to create other development opportunities through perhaps some secondary street systems. But all of this being sort of concentrated and connected very, very clearly to Two Rivers Park and engaged with the park, with the river. The bridge itself, think of it in terms of not a standard kind of thin generic pedestrian bridge, but perhaps some sort of activated usable bridge, almost a park bridge that's wider in nature that has activities on it. And really connects people from the east, from the north side or the east side to the other side of I-70. And really puts the two together. The park overlook being some sort of vertical element that really has some great views of Mount Sobris in the distance and then also of the entire riverfront. And then, again, that's the bridge, it's a place. And then all of that keying into park improvements that are planned for 2017 and in close proximity to the existing parking. So this is kind of the, an idea to float by everybody to see if it has some teeth. And it's something that might be of interest. And then just some pictures of contemporary spans, contemporary buildings, iconic gateway kind of buildings. Not to kind of get, scare you away, but perhaps a bridge thought of as something a little bit more that could have other elements integrated in with it that would activate it in terms of more than just a way of getting from point A to point B. And then other elements that could be integrated into the bridge, landscaping on the bridge and other elements that really give that a sense of place rather than just that kind of circulation pattern. So that's our presentation. We wanted to keep it to 20 minutes. And welcome to, to back up and go through any of these slides if you so choose. But we're going to open it up for questions and discussion and use the remaining time for you guys to ask questions.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What is, once the bridge closes, I mean, you know, rerouting on a traffic, what's the need going to be to have two lanes going each way? I've noticed that in the first set of slides, there were four lanes there and they were showing the bike lanes and all that.
Two lanes were parked.
For parking?
Parallel parking.
Parallel parking. There are two travel lanes.
You're talking about Sixth Street? This section right here?
I think it was one. Yeah, that was it.
This is parking, parallel parking.
I'm like less.
Welcome to the club.
Why, why we even have parking there if we're talking about building parking off-street and all that? What are the thoughts of just having two lanes of traffic instead of parking with all the rest of pedestrians? Kind of a hybrid pedestrian space.
So we have actually had a lot of this discussion. And the discussion goes down east on Sixth Street to a section that we haven't even talked about today. And part of that is, for one thing, there could be an in-between stage where some of the businesses haven't turned over. They're used to having parking there already. That's not to say that they couldn't, you know, that that doesn't change. But it primarily has to do with convenience. You know, we can put, most of the potential parking structure locations are further either to the north or to the west. And so as we get down into this focused area, there may be some shorter term or, you know, type uses that that one's parking there. There's also a little bit, just from, I'm a traffic engineer, and so my brain thinks that way. There's also a little bit of side friction that's created that actually makes the space feel a little bit lower speed and makes people treat it as the roadway as it would look like. Where if you don't have parking, it can feel a little bit easier to travel faster.
What's the benefit to having, I noticed in the slide that came after this, you only have the bike on the other side?
Yeah.
In terms of functionality, is it, to me, just it seems more functional to have a bike lane on one of the east directions. But I mean, I'm hoping that being...
So there's, there's two pieces on that. There's the fact that bike lanes on, or the bike facility wouldn't even be a lane in this case, is on one side. And there's also that it's shared in this one and it's not on the other. Certainly, if it's not shared, it's, you know, easier for a bicycle, fewer bicycle pedestrian conflicts. Now, if we have it up on that level, there's still going to be some. The reason we showed the other one was because we did want to show an option that separated them. However, if you think of it, can we go to a more overall map?
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
How's that?
Yep. So if you think of the fact that our bike routing, if you're a bicyclist, some folks are going to ride through the roundabout, but the, you know, visitor with their seven-year-old plaque can ride through the roundabout. So it goes up through here somehow, right? And we have ideas on that. But so this is almost a spur as a bicycle, right, in a way? And so as a spur or maybe a less-used path than like right up here, does it make sense for it to be on one side or the other or be separated? So that's one of the reasons we thought of it. When it is on one side, one thing to bring up, if it is on the north side, it means that you're going to have bicyclists, which are higher-speed traveling in a direction that when a, when a car's coming down, they look this way and see if they can turn. And they may have an out of the way. So that's one thing, the crossings are a little bit different.
I think that there's another reality of the fact that the intersection right here, there is no pedestrian connection across on the south side. You know, you're all aware of that. And so there may be the need to put a little bit more emphasis on the north side of Sixth, simply because any pedestrians that are walking here, we're going to need to move them across to the north side to get, or they're going to dead-end right into the roundabout. So we need, so there, there may be a benefit of creating a little bit more of a promenade on the north side. And that's the sunny side as well. So it's going to have a lot better melt, snow melt and sun. But it's certainly up for, up for discussion.
I, I can see that being a benefit for the businesses that are on the east side of Laurel. I do think it's, what it creates is the need for a, a well-defined crossing at the, where the path coming from River Park connects.
Yeah.
Yeah, this path here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it goes under, under, you're going to wander Highway 82 or, yeah.
It goes under, there's, there's, there's a tunnel right here and then it goes up to Sixth right here, right?
Right, right.
And then it does cross.
For instance, if you're coming from Two Rivers Park and you're going to the pool, you would have to cross and then potentially cross again.
Right. And I, I see that actually as from a bicycle standpoint, being probably the, the bigger movement, just because people are going to be coming mostly from River Land, the River Land Trail, going across the Colorado River, going through River Park, trying to head out to the Canyon Trail.
They, they have the option, Mike, of, of coming under the, under I-70 and then getting right here, they can, there is a, a, a path up to River Street. They can go along River Street here.
Right. And that, that's where everyone goes now and it's, it's fine. I think those people with smaller kids are going to want to probably take the defined bike path because when you're.
We'd love to.
Right. It's really hard to stay in front of the, the cars and you got five-year-olds on, on bikes. It's a little exciting.
Yeah.
And there's, there's also something to be said for making sure that, that your city regulations allow for, or we're discussing whether they should allow for bicycle or for sidewalk riding in, you know, certain segments of this. Because like I said, on further to the west of the roundabout, even though in that case we're emphasizing the north side, there will be folks who ride on the sidewalk to get to a crossing. And so this may be kind of an extension of that same discussion.
And we want to create such a great place right here that they're going to want to come up and experience this, this new park right here and that potential development of this entire area here. That'd be terrific. And then they want to get to the, to the park, they want to get to the Canyon Trail. They just come right over here and they're not on the trail.
How much, I know that a lot of the ideas involve property that is not public. I mean, how, how many of those ideas have been embedded with those kind of specific properties? For example, the parking structure, I know we have, we're doing a free, free prop, private property on this area. I think the extension of Fifth Street is going to probably deal with one on the east and at least one on the west side of, of Sixth.
Yeah, this, this out here.
So have those ideas been?
They have not.
Even thrown out there to them? So are they, are they aware of them?
They're aware of them, yeah, yeah. They are, the, the landowner of the hotel right here has, has seen the concept of some sort of connection across Fifth from the January workshop that we have. And so it's, and then, and there's a heck of a lot of, of activity with, with the idea of the, some sort of parking structure here. But nothing has ever been, if it's been fleshed out, it hasn't been shown to anyone unless you've seen something.
Has, has the location for parking structure, an ultimate location been discussed? That would be essentially where Yes or No is and then it would be an L-shaped structure and then behind us, of Colorado. Has that been discussed by the group at all?
We've, we've heard from some of the stakeholders about the potential of, of this, but nothing's been formalized. I think that certainly it's worthy of, of having discussions with the, the new owners of Hotel Colorado and what their plans are for parking, seriously what their plans are. Because they seem to be the big, the big user of parking and then they're running their river raft trips up and up here. And, and we've heard over and over again from landowners, residents up in, up in the hill, how they are impacted with a lot of that overflow parking, weddings and things like that. So I think that's worthy of discussing with Hotel Colorado what there's, what their plans are for solving the problem.
Question. As I look at this, I haven't realized that I think this, your scope was from Pine Street West.
Our, our scope is actually from.
Oh, is?
All the way from Men, all the way up to and past Deveraux.
Okay. So that leads me to a question. What is planned there? Are there any plans from Pine East?
From Pine East this area?
About connecting the, you know, the bike trail, like Mike was mentioning and just, you know, that the same sort of feel that you've got on Sixth Street from Pine to Laurel.
Yes. Alicia, Alicia did a number of boards that are all focused on a great many different pieces and parts of the, of the, of the entire corridor. And yeah, she has, she's addressed that specifically.
So this, this is probably the piece that although not one of the three kind of key components that we've talked about tonight, has still a lot going on and a lot, you know, discussion. The existing cross-section has, this is Hotel Colorado right here, and it has parking here and then, you know, pool parking separate from the roadway. So talking about what that could look like in the future, we've talked about the same discussion of do you have a one, a bike facility on each side? Or do you make this roadway feel a little bit more like a shared space? Certainly not a shared space in terms of a plaza, but just make it more comfortable for bicyclists. And then the question of do we provide parking along there or not at all? And if we do provide parking, whether maybe the bicycles aren't on the roadway, if they're again on the side path. So that discussion is going on. So, yeah, we all.
Because part, part of this, you know, the bike distance itself, it's a street shape.
And, and this, this trip. One of, one of my goals as the transportation component of the team, I was out today measuring stuff all the way down by the Dookings and there etc. Because I know there, there's a lot of moving parts down there. So I, we're.
Okay, great, thank you.
A few years ago, we did a study to look at options to replace our, where we could place the deconstructed Grand Avenue pedestrian bridge. And one of those options that, that we decided against, but it seemed like a potentially good place for pedestrian bridge is actually over at the east end of the, of the pool, right across there, almost effectively, I think that's ended, I think, over to essentially the Forman Arts Center. It would have to be, it'd have to hit on the hillside above the Forman Arts Center to maintain the great separation of, of the interstate. But has that concept been discussed at all in, in this group? And I, I think it provides yet another good connection from the Seventh Street area. You know, and, and the other thought there is that as we build the Confluence, like my pointer, when I, it's here, but that's right, I can just talk. But as we, as we develop the Confluence, which is a concept of kind of splitting off a bike spur off the River Land Trail, and would effectively follow what is now east leg of the railroad line.
Yeah.
Right into Seventh Street.
Yeah.
And so it could be a, a little bit smoother bike transition. Right now, the only really bikeable bridge we have is the, the Two Rivers Bridge. But if we put one over at the other end, that might be a good idea. So we might, we'd want to be, I think, not like our new Grand Avenue pedestrian bridge where you have to either get off and walk it up some stairs or get it in an elevator. We want it to be a truly bikeable route.
Yeah. You're, you're spot on. I think that the idea of, of some sort of bike connection. Imagine now, another yellow strip over here, and now that brings people, I mean, these are the serious bikers, the bike bicyclists that are, that are, that don't want to get off their bike. They want to just ride straight across the bridge and then straight down into the core. And you can almost picture this, now this loop expanding over here and over to the Canyon Trail, and then the Canyon Trail coming back to here and creating this much larger loop. And we're, we're investigating even additional connections up here to see if there's a possibility of getting individuals from, in this area here, over to the Canyon Trailhead as well. Because right now it's so pinched and, and if we could somehow bridge across here in addition to perhaps a secondary connection up here into the neighborhood, that would really relieve that pinch point, which is, we're all aware of right there.
Jim, but we had, that did come up. We're kind of still working into that end. One of the things we had talked about was right now the trailhead is basically hidden and you can't, you know, isn't there really a trailhead? It's just where the trail happens to start. That that could, you know, bring that across the river to help with whether it's parking or, or use of kind of wayfinding.
And this is kind of the simplified version of that loop diagram. I mean, this loop has spokes that go out into the community, you know, in new, you know, in many, many locations. So we'll get, you know, we'll refine how those spokes work and how the wayfinding happens for people to get around the loop and into the community. So, so this is kind of the big picture idea, but, but ultimately that's where we'll head.
What, what I've been working on is definitely kind of a bigger picture of, of some of these connections and points of which there would be major kind of points of orientation for people. This would be wayfinding, signage, and so that people, not only residents, but also visitors, tourists would have points. This is the park in Pine and Sixth. This is downtown at the, at the elevator that touched down to Seventh and then down to Confluence Park. And then other areas of which they would stop and this is the, and get oriented to, oh, okay, right here, I'll go this way and get onto the Canyon Trail. So we're kind of trying to hit all of these different pieces and parts, but this certainly could be added to it with that, that, that bridge connection over there. I'm not sure how, if it's been seriously studied or if the idea was floated and then it just kind of went away.
It was, it was evaluated. I mean, we actually evaluated, I think, for two different locations, just in rotation.
Yeah.
And with, you know, as far as options to, to set our, our existing grid, they were taken down by CDOT.
Yeah.
The challenge with it at that location is it was real short. It, it would be need for about, I think, thirty feet on the south end on the, on the Seventh Street end, or that's not Seventh Street at that point, but South Rivers, what is that street there? It's South Rivers, maybe Seventh Street, but, and so we found a better place for it over at least for some segments of it, over Fourteenth Street.
Yeah.
Roaring Fork River. But it doesn't negate the idea that that could be a good place for a bridge. And, you know, it'd be, in, in terms of spans, this could be real similar to the Grand Avenue Bridge.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have to be quite as, it could be a, a big arch-type bridge with nice columns and, you know, we don't have to spend thirty million dollars on, I know that's not what we're spending.
I, I think anything we can do to, to reinforce the bike routes and really establish Glenwood as the go-to place for that kind of recreation and especially like Derek, that Canyon, it's such a great entity and make it, make it a wonderful experience to almost seamlessly go from the canyon through the downtown on the, on the promenade, that railroad spur and connect right into the, the Roaring Fork, Rio Grande Trail would be fantastic. And, and then, oh, by the way, stop and have a beer on Seventh Street on your head and that's what you want.
Yeah. But by dividing that, that traffic into two legs, I think it'll reduce, it could very well reduce some of the conflicts that happen getting out to that narrow entrance at the Maple Caves. And I mean, if you could pull people who want to head south off out there, you know, it does, I think it would help. And people trying to get there from the Roaring Fork to get to the canyon, which a lot of people do for the Rio Grande, yeah, that'd be a great.
One of the things that Mr. Campbell has brought up in the past is the idea of crossing north of the River Park area, across, could be Deveraux Road. Up there, yeah. Deveraux Road Bridge.
Deveraux Road Bridge, which if you look at it from.
That's, we have a.
Deveraux Road Bridge. Deveraux Road Bridge, okay. This is not, not ever like before.
There it is.
Starts to make more sense when we're looking at this kind of, if, if, if you have a community center, we have all this activity here. Has that been studied in earnest at all? A couple arrows from here to there. Because I think, at least in the medium term, this may make more sense, more value, public community than this kind of investment here, which is pretty expensive. Really, really expensive, lots of light acquisition and lots of expensive, pretty costly to think like that. Would this be done, maybe not costing fortune, maybe not that much risk. Obviously, there's been no analysis done, there'll be people jumping up and down saying, confession centers fail, you know, what we really need there.
Do you have enough light in your pointer to show the landing point on the Deveraux side?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be, my, my thought on that is it'd be, you'd make that a.
It's battling.
It's a battle.
You know, you make, you make this point, a, a bike spoke roundabout right there.
Mine's dead.
And then I would, I think the alignment, and mine's dead. I'd bring the alignment to a cross diagonal.
That's your day-to-day pointer, not your.
Yeah, that's, I'd bring it to a cross diagonal here. That way you could, this, this connection to Deveraux in, while this, this wouldn't require any property acquisition. You put one pier on that I mark, one pier on this bank here, then you tie in, you go over the, the bike path right there. So you have great separation on your bike path. Do another roundabout there, a large roundabout there, bike spoke roundabout, and then a roundabout over there where you tie, what's that, River Trail, bring it in so it's a four-way. Even if it's not a roundabout there, if that doesn't work because of the proximity to the hillside there, then you make that a four-way intersection.
It's possible to build the Midland-Deveraux Bridge with no roundabouts, though, right?
Yeah, you could. You, well, I mean, they just, bike spoke intersections could be a little challenging because trying to do traffic control with five legs is, so years ago I was working in Boston and they had a, an intersection with five points in it and they had one little concrete pillar in the middle with a yield sign on it.
For everyone to yield.
There was a disaster.
I'm sitting on that, it's awful.
It's a must, it's called concealed carry. Taking the time to ask the questions because the, the, we were approached today by the group promoting the ANI tax for priorities. And the, what they call the River Walk, what we're calling Confluence, is taken to include everything that you've heard tonight. And, you know, there's something for everybody in the proposal. So for the bricks and mortar crowd, the Midland-Deveraux Bridge is a very important piece. And you're talking about connectivity and various, you know, smaller pedestrian loops and larger vehicle loops that make a lot more sense if you could cross right there. Because right now, when you cross, you cross, I don't want to say to nothing, but you cross to a very long, you know, two miles.
Yeah, maybe two miles back. Yeah, since it connects right in at our, our West London crossing, it's almost not another River Park area for, for all purposes.
That's right.
And so this would be a true connection that would really benefit Glenwood dramatically. It would provide a connection from North Glenwood through the Meadows, from all of, everybody on, on Midland to, you know, Red Mountain to South Glenwood. If they want to get to I-70, they no longer have to get on Grand Avenue at all. They can just stay on, on Midland up to this route, go on up to Highway Six, take a right and, and go right on down, you know, to the interstate there. So.
I think you could build something truly. You could build something truly built, you know, like that.
Yeah.
Industrial, yeah.
Not at all, it would be, you know, I think at a minimum, you probably design the structures there, accommodate four lanes of traffic, maybe only put two lanes of traffic in now, but certainly one nice twelve-foot wide or sixteen-foot wide head bike lane as well.
Would you have a view of the huge side? It's a visualizer.
It's how light it is to walk across it.
Oh, the existing bridge there.
I gotta say.
I'd rather do it after a night at the park.
I gotta say, anytime we talk about bridges, it's easy to get really excited about each kind of one. However, this idea scares me because I think it pushes the idea of South Ridge, which I think is more necessary than that, even further off to.
I guess I don't think it does, only because I think this bridge could honestly be built, it's about eight hundred and seventy-five feet long.
Maybe a lot less.
Yeah, I think, I think this could be built for twelve million bucks, and South Ridge is forty-five million bucks.
Just saying, if we had twenty-five percent of the city's population that uses a forward road.
I don't disagree, if we had forty-five million dollars, we could go to South Ridge, but.
What's that?
Yeah, any other questions before we get going?
Thank you for everything.
Yeah, thank you for your total time and effort to this.